I now call this meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republi-- for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the infinite justices and all.
So, for the record, we have all staff present, and all councilmen, with the exception of Julia Johnson, who is on travel. I would entertain a motion at this time to excuse her absence.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Councilman Johnson's absence. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it carries. So first up is a consent calendar. Council knows the drill. We have items A through F this evening.
May I move that we approve items A through F on a consent calendar?
Second. A motion was made by Councilman Carnegie and seconded by Councilman Kinzer to approve the consent agenda items A through F. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it carries unanimously. So we're down to the public comment period. Before we start public comment, I would like to make note of the fact that I received a very erroneous social media handout that says, "The city is going to close the library." So if you're here for that, and the room seems full, which it should be if that were, in fact, even remotely true, I can tell you, this is totally false. So I don't know where it came from, or what kind of person would put something out there that is clearly... That's just crazy. Anyway, if you're here for that, I'm sorry to disappoint you. That is a completely false statement, and I'm sorry that somebody put that out on the Internet. That said, some of you have done this before, some not, so I will go over the rules. If you'd like to participate in our public comment this evening, you'll come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. You may not address issues that are on the agenda, but otherwise, you're welcome. Remember, you're addressing the city council, not each other, and that it's not an opportunity to argue a cross-examined council. Just state your opinion. You have one chance at the podium. And with that said, I invite the first person up.
Good evening. I'm Loretta Salmon and reside at 821 Park Cottage Place. Thanks to my public high school civics class, I'm aware of my responsibilities as a citizen. And those include being respectful of the rights, beliefs, and opinions of others, participating in the democratic process, and my right to vote, pay taxes, so our government can exist and provide services, and finally, to stay informed of issues affecting our city, county, state, and nation. I'm one of the many fellow citizens who oppose a library proposal. All of us, some present in this room tonight, are fulfilling one of the most important responsibilities of being a citizen, by participating in the democratic process of governance. Or at least, that's what we're trying to do. We want to engage in the decision-making of our shared and valued city resource, the library. The proposal, written in January, announced the consolidation of operations between the city and Central Skagit, Partial County Library. In this proposal, there is no inclusion of city opinions on the merger. It didn't address engaging citizens' participation through dialogue, or make provisions for public forums where citizens could discuss the proposal with the council and fellow citizens. In February, an update to the library proposal was sent to you, the city council. In the memo, it states, "You have all had the opportunity to examine what is actually written in the proposal. But what about the citizens, who elect you and provide the funding? Have all of the citizens had an opportunity to read the proposal? Why was the library proposal only posted on the city website? Why wasn't a copy of the proposal sent out to all taxpayers to establish they had been informed? Or covered in the recent city magazine, ensuring all citizens receive this information through more than one communication channel?" In this memo, I quote, it says, "There will be a robust public process. As of this date, I'm not aware of any public venues where citizens can engage with you." None. A disturbing sentence in this memo did jar me. I quote, "We got here through selfishness and inability to separate people and personalities from goals." Framing, that's the term they use, brought up by political strategists and PR people...
You have around 30 seconds to finish your thought.
...is a distasteful, damaging barrier creator. Using the old fallacy of divide and conquer, of them against us violates the spirit in the intent of the democratic process. There is only us. The us includes people who have different points of views. Framing uses labels as written in this memo, like selfishness and inability to trivialize and minimize citizens, and shut down engagement, and take the focus off real issues. It is not a pure fantasy to me that we, the citizens, have not been included in this process.
I'm gonna have to ask you.
My options, my options have been to make public comments at city council meetings, write, and send a memo to you. As of today, I haven't heard from anyone. And write a letter to the editor.
Okay, I'm sorry. You have to give everybody time.
I respectfully request that as elected officials, that you fulfill your responsibility of providing venues for dialogue on this proposal, and engage with your constituents, the people who elected you in good faith to serve them. I propose, I have a proposal, that each district council member hold a library proposal public for...
Let me tell you what's gonna happen if this continues. We will recess until the order can be destroyed.
And afterwards, the citywide forum can be held. Only after this democratic process of identifying citizen needs, their ideas and solutions have been weighed, can the proposal proceed. If there is, finally, a proposal, it will go to the citizens for their vote, as it is our right and responsibility to vote on any final proposal.
Thank you.
I invite you all, I invite you all, to engage in the process of democracy with goodwill and good intent, and in this community, there are more than one way to go ahead and tackle a supposed problem that we have around our library. Thank you.
Okay, before we have another speaker, I want you please to follow the rules. Otherwise, I will have no choice but to take a recess until we can all behave according to the rules. Now, I've always been polite and respectful to everyone here. I expect the same in return. For those of you who came in late, before this started, I said that I have received some social media that says, "The city is going to close the library," in definite way. That is completely, 100% false, and I just want you to know that. If you're here for that purpose, somebody has perpetuated a very mean and untrue hoax on you. Next person, please.
Randy Goode, 35, 82 State Route, 20 Cedar Wully. Just maybe a question on format here. My comments are dealing with the comp plan update, but just the process, nothing about my comments that we had put in earlier.
That's fine.
Okay. I'm president of the Friends of Skagit County. At April 18th, Planning Commission Transportation Public Hearing, Friends of Skagit County presented testimony, pages 321 to 329, in your packet, addressing several legal issues on a project being added to the transportation improvement program. Information, I think, that this council really needs to make, to make a meaningful decision. The Planning Commission never deliberated on our Friends of Skagit County's comments. Now, there are state and federal requirements that early, continuous, and meaningful public participation is carried out on transportation projects that are to be added to this TIP, and be eligible for state and federal funds. And deliberations are actually part of it. A letter to the council is also put into your guys' record, in the packet. And thanks for your consideration of our comments.
Thank you, Randy.
Hi, my name is Sheila Moore. I live at 820 Dana Drive in Cedar Wully. And my comments are about the library. Not near as eloquently, as previously stated, but I'm a user of the library. I greatly enjoy the library, and try to take advantage of it as much as possible. I am very confused by the situation. I don't know what's going on. And, other than the website, is there a place that I can find out this information of what's going to happen, what's gonna happen with the library, what's gonna happen with the employees, you know, what's gonna hap- how's the money gonna be coming? That's what I would like to know. If there's something that could be put out, just to that effect, that, you know, us people that are not as politically involved and don't understand the process as much, can see it and understand it. I, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. I'll address that at the end of public comment.
My name is James Moore, and I live at 820 Dana Drive, with the other lady that was just here. My question is to the mayor. It maybe wasn't the last meeting that we had here, but it was a previous meeting. When I asked you to explain to me how this project was going to be financed, and you stated to me that if I would come in and see you, that you would explain. If there's nothing being done here, if the library's not being closed, if we're not opening a new library, why should you explain those finances to me? And if you can explain it to me, why can't you explain it to these people? Can you answer that? I think you understand the format of this is for you to make a statement, not to interrogate the staff or the city council. Okay, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
So I made a personal offer, not only to you, but to anybody in this room who has questions. They may come in at any time and talk to me. Everything is on the website. The city website prominently displayed thousands and thousands of pages of documents. They're available for everybody, and we're getting more out every day. But there seems to be a lot of confusion here. I concur.
I think, my name is Julie Anderson, 314 Hawthorne, Cedar Wully. Just about everything I was gonna say has already been said, but I really agree with the fact that I think this, our library is so unique, and it fits Cedar Wully just perfectly. It's our library. I feel like I own part of it, because I'm a taxpayer, have been for 40 years. And I just hope this is all legal that you guys are doing. And maybe you can answer that question for me, to see whether or not us voting, too, we should be able to vote on it. At least, I feel like I should, and I'm sure there's a lot of people that do, too. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Next up, please.
My name is Chris Hunter. I live at 23490 Moser Road in Cedar Wully. I'm a cardholder at both the Cedar Wully Library and the Central Skagit Library, as well as an employee of the city. The Central Skagit Library has had three years to provide adequate services for me, and I don't believe they've done that. I don't see the benefit of combining the two libraries at this time or in this way. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else? Oh, we got two standing. How about the lady in the front place first?
Pat Hammond, 729 Sock Mountain Drive. I also am a cardholder of the library, have been for many years. Our Cedar Wully Library, the staff is excellent, their services are great. I don't understand why we want to cut down and be the second portion of the other library, the regional, can't think of it. Anyway, please think about it, and if you want, put it to a vote. And remember that you also come up for a vote.
I'm Marsha Hampton. I live at 1913 Seventh Street. I just wanna say thank you to the mayor and to the attorney for being at the library board meeting this evening. I'm not a member of the library board, but I do go, trying to figure this thing out. And I'm hoping that the library will take up your generous offer to include more people in a larger venue, so that they can all be seen. I'm with everyone else. I really think we need to vote on this library thing, rather than just talk about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Anybody else?
1035 Clifford Street, Cedar Wully here. I know that you can't speak to us, it was the fact that we still have questions about it, and from what we're listening out there, there's a lot of people that do seem to have questions. But my main question is, are we wasting our time? If you guys have already made up your mind, and you're just shutting us out totally, I feel like I haven't heard any real response from you guys as to the possibilities of discussing it with the community, as opposed to this forum where we talk and you don't talk. If nothing else, I think that we need to at least have an advisory vote from the city here to let people know, or let you know, as to what the majority of people in this city think of your proposal. I hadn't seen that little memo you mentioned there about the library being closed, but it's not being closed, it's being given away. We're no longer going to have it. So, I don't know, you wanna call it closed, you wanna call it gave away, I'm sure it's still the same thing. On a different subject, two meetings ago, you discussed the splash park, and what was going on there, and then, so this last meeting, I thought you were going to have another session where we could get up and speak of the splash park, but it was all in one great big bunch, so I didn't get a chance to jump back up and say I'd like to ask some questions about that. There's, well, again, it seems to be a kind of a hidden subject. There's lots of things seem to be going on that aren't really being discussed with the public. I'd like to know a few things, like where are the diagrams at, where is the location going to be for this splash park? Where's the money gonna come from for the installation and maintenance of this park? We also have things like the building itself, that assumes they're gonna have to have some kind of a structure there. There's gonna be electricity, lights, power, pumps, water. Who's gonna pay for the water for this? The upkeep, the maintenance, is a caretaker going to take up all of the maintenance and taking care of the whole facility that's proposed at this point? Speaking of the caretaker, is he gonna be doing all of the maintenance, all the testing? Is he gonna determine when the building's going to be, or the facility's going to be operated, when it hits some warm weather? Is he gonna jump right up and start that thing going when the warm weather hit? Oh, now it's always 60 degrees? We better shut it back down till it gets warmer? Who's gonna determine when that splash park is going to be in?
Thirty seconds, please.
So, anyway, they gotta determine what time. I know I grew up in Seattle, where we had Green Lake, little, they had ponds around Green Lake. And every so often, the kids would, they had a little area that they could go play in, what we call it the pee pool, because that's exactly what it was. It was a place where those little kids get in that water, and that's the first thing that happens, you know? And I'm not sure how many other 30 things were in there. Who's gonna determine when that pool is closed down for maintenance, for cleaning up these little piters that are in that pool? Is that maintenance person gonna do that? Those are several questions. Thank you very much.
Gentleman in the back. Yes, sir. We're all getting our money's worth tonight, that's for sure.
Well, I'm sure writing marks won't be as colorful as the president's speaker. My name's Cole Ryan, and I live at 22906 Green Lane. I also have property at 1231 Warner Street. So my residence is right outside the city, but I also have property and a business inside town here. The Cedar Wully City Library has for 100 years been involved in the community, gives excellent service, and is part of the community. And from what I've been hearing in the community, and talking to different people, trying to make an objective decision, I've got some real concerns that the current negotiations in process may not be to the best interest of the city. And it may not be the best interest of the citizens of the city. It seems to me that it's not going to provide and maintain the library as we know it and use it. The negotiations, as I understand them, with the regional library to date, include the premise of that the taxpayers, excuse me, I have allergies, I've been having them all day, that the Cedar Wully pays for refurbished or a new building, to be either subleased or leased to the Skagit Regional Library, and at the end of the lease, that property be turned over to the Skagit Regional Library, with perhaps Cedar Wully maintaining the maintenance and the building charges. Now, that's what I understand, perhaps it's a run, I don't know. And I've talked to a lot of people in the valley, in the city here, and that confusion seems to be fairly frequent. One of the main concerns, complaints, that I've heard, is there's been a lack of communication from the administration led by Mayor Wagner, and that's not a personal criticism, sir, I'm just passing on what I've heard in the valley, and what I personally feel. There doesn't seem to be a clear objective stated in the negotiations. There seems to be contradictory information. So as the taxpaying citizenry out there, they feel like they're afloat, that they're not getting responses from the city council, they're not getting responses. And I have to point to you, mayor, because you lead the city council in the city. As I'm sure you're aware of, up the chain of command, the buck stops at your desk. And I think that there needs to be an effort, a concentrated effort, made to improve the communication, clean the communication up, so that we know what we're talking about, and what we do, what we understand.
About 30 seconds, please.
Thank you. I'm gonna reinforce the value of our city library under local control, the city library, for the citizens of Cedar Wully. And I would really, really regret to see that become part of the central library without being under the Cedar Wully umbrella of the Cedar Wully City Library. I think that the proposition that was given in one of the last meetings at Cedar Wully be a contracting entity, and have a contract with the other communities that wanna participate, deserves some real, serious consideration.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Anybody else?
So I'm Christine Johnson. I live at 801 McLean. The social media you referred to earlier, you know, I haven't seen it, I don't think that's why people are here tonight. So I've got two points to make tonight. The first one is that there are about 55 people here tonight, and the vast majority are here because they care about our library. And they wanna keep it, and they wanna spend our money to improve it, not give it away. I would like the mayor to acknowledge that it is not just the same old people all the time here, like he's been saying in the past couple meetings. Although you should be impressed, that many of us are willing to come to every single meeting. There have been many different people come to these meetings the past five months. Many people care. And there's been 30 different people gotten up here and spoken against giving the library away. So that's the message you should be taking away tonight. There's many of us, we do care, and we're not going away. Second point, regarding the ongoing library negotiations. According to the central library district, the city has agreed to virtual all the points they want. The major points being that all the assets of the city library will be given to them, we'll build them a building, and then, if you leave, their attorney will also give them that building once paid off. So that's not a partnership, it's not a marriage, that's a co- So, that's not a partnership, it's not a marriage, that's a contract, allowing to annexation of Cedar Valley into their district without a vote of the people. And that's not fair, and I don't think it's legal either. You think you've got an attorney general opinion giving us the right to do this, but it's very vague and contradictory, and therefore unlikely to hold up in court. There is no case law on this, because evidently no city's ever been crazy enough to want to give away their fully functioning library before. Every city that's become part of a countywide system, the citizens of that town got to vote to become part of it through annexation. The mayor, the mayor doesn't yet to negotiate the library away. The city council doesn't yet to vote the library away. No, the citizens get to vote to decide the fate of their library. I really, please remember that, I want you to remember that, because I really don't think any of us want to stand up in a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
My name is Helga Anderson, 928 Eastley Road, and good evening everybody at the council, Mr. Mayor, and heads of department. I think, Mr. Mayor, you could end this thing really quick, and you could get back to the regular city council meetings, with one or two people in the boardroom, by taking this up for a vote, if you were willing to do that. Like in any race, that's once somebody wins and somebody loses, but that's a chance you will have to take. And maybe that would be a good thing if you win. But anyway, you need to take this to a vote to the people in Cedar Valley, but you've got to be willing to do it. Thank you, I'd probably use 30 seconds. So, maybe I can give the other two and a half minutes to somebody else. Well, it doesn't work that way, but...
Next up, please.
Can we hear from this one?
You'll get your chance, I'll make sure.
Hi, my name is Michael Bingham, I've been a resident of Cedar Valley, I live at 1231 Warner Street, I manage Cole Vernon's property and business there. I've been a resident of Cedar Valley about three years, and I come from a town that had a library, and it failed, our town was failing, we lived in the town's concrete. I grew up there, I went to high school there, it was a great place to call home, and I think that about Cedar Valley as well. They built a new library for the Central Library District, Central Library Building, and it was a wonderful thing, we really thought it was great, until those of us who are citizens of the town, the ones that dwelt within the city limits, realized now we were being charged to use the library system. I have a question, is that going to be the case in Cedar Valley? I'm pretty new to the library debate, however, since I do come from a very impoverished background, and I feel like I'm lifting myself out of that and moving up in taxpayer brackets, I feel like my voice is a little stronger now than it once was, and I wonder, I really do wonder if all of a sudden now, our library that we pay for, and that we enjoy so much, and has been around for so long, will become, will become an extra burden to us if we want to use it. Also, I'm curious to see what happens, because it sounds as if, everything I've read so far, that this isn't going to go to a public vote, which I think is appalling, I really do. It does not seem like the Skagit County Democratic Way. But at the same time, what's going to happen to the employees of our library, and what's wrong with the current building? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. This man, you've been waiting patient, right?
Hello, my name is Wendy Granberg, 1009 Paul T. Road. A large and diverse group of concerned citizens has spoken up regarding the library issue, and all of our concerns and questions seem to fall on deaf ears, and quite frankly, unconcerned faces. Let's be honest, there are facts, there are negotiations with the Central Skagit Library Board, this has been ongoing. Excuse me. Currently, all Cedar Valley School District students do have access to the library. Please don't present this as about the students. We all know this is about money, power, and control. And anyone wanting to give our, give our library away, in my opinion, has no respect or appreciation for education, literature, art, culture, community, resources, et cetera, et cetera. How is giving away the library in line with the vision of Cedar Valley being a STEM and manufacturing center of the Pacific Northwest? As elected officials that represent us, it is your right and duty to respond to us. It would seem to me it is in your best interest to speak out on this issue and respond to the community, hold a public community meeting, and allow for an open dialogue and exchange of ideas, and eliminate the confusion. We live in a democracy, and libraries support democracy. In all honesty, I don't want to meet with you individually to discuss this issue, this is a community issue, and it is worthy of a community response. My sorry, mind you, again, the vision statement of Cedar Valley is a friendly city that is characterized by city government and citizens working together to achieve a prosperous, vibrant, and safe community. Nothing about this feels very friendly, nothing about this feels like we're working together, and it certainly doesn't feel very prosperous. The mission statement of your council is to provide services and opportunities which create a community where people choose to live, work, and play. I find it hard to believe that intelligent families and potential business owners with money to spend and invest would want to live, work, or do business in a city that gave its library away. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Jim Johnson, 587 Carter Street, here in town. I've been to several of these meetings now, and have probably spoken too often to little effect. And I've looked, I appreciate the calls for a vote, but at the same time, I've looked for kind of an analogous situation, and, I'll get to that in a second, and then, Mayor, you indicated this wasn't to be a cross-examining session. But so far, it seems the council will be making the decision, and I'm not asking for an answer, but I find myself wondering, do these council folks, are they library patrons? Do they value libraries? Do they see them as a community resource? And frankly, I don't know, and the one-way nature of this conversation, we get to speak, and you look sagely and impassively at us, and then we leave. And it don't feel like dialogue, and I don't know when that happens. And thinking of an analogous situation, I assumed, or I thought, perhaps because I had taught at Woolly for 20 years, that suppose the Cedar Valley School District were merging with the Burlington School District, I would assume that my elected school board members were out there walking the hallways, talking to teachers, talking to students, talking to parents, finding the strengths and weaknesses of our school, before we said, "Burlington, perhaps it's yours to run, because you'll do a better job." I would hope that the council and the mayor would do their homework, and not simply wait for us to come to them in this rather rigid three-minute format, in which we cannot ask questions. So, I would hope the council is fully engaged. If you're not a library patron, I would hope that you took advantage of the opportunity to look at the new children's garden at the library, without even checking out a book. It's a wonderful little resource, and something we should be proud of. So, I don't have any suggestions for how this project should work, but it doesn't, at this juncture, feel very satisfactory, and in that, having said that, I think I'm echoing the comments that have already been made. Thank you.
Next up, going once, don't want to be said I didn't give everyone a chance.
My name's Tony Tomassino, I live at 704 Sauk Mountain Drive, and it's been about a month since I was here, and I would note to the, to the city council that there are a lot more faces here than the last time I was here, and the voices seem to be pretty much united, as they want an advisory vote, people just asking for a vote. Now, the city of Cedar Valley, it seems like they want to take on some incurred debt on behalf of the people. Last time I checked in Washington State, before you can do that, you've got to give the people a vote on that, you need to get a three-fifths majority. So, you might want to look at that. So, I would just like to ask the city council that you give the people of the city an advisory vote. And remember, you do have fiduciary responsibility to us.
Hi, my name is Dorothy DeFremery, I'm at 316 Garden of Eden Road, and I haven't been involved in this from the beginning, but I have gone back and read as much as possible online to get myself up to speed, and just this afternoon, as the mayor and Mr. Bergno, I was at the library board meeting here to get some answers, and it did help to hear that, right now, it is in the process of getting an idea of what we would get, and what we would lose, and what are our points of no compromise. But regardless of all that, I think that the city needs to have this library as part of our heritage, it has been, and where it is located currently, it's just perfect, there's the senior center, there's a community center, there's a play area. So, keeping the library combined with that, to me, is a real asset. As a teacher, I've known the schools, all three of the elementary schools walk to the library, they have walking field trips, so these kids aren't just learning what a school library is, they're learning what a public library is. They're seeing what's there to offer, they're working with actual librarians. In the public schools, we've lost most of our librarians. The people who used to direct kids to an actual book, and know their interests, are gone, except in our public libraries. And I really worry about this growing so big. So, my, what I would like to have seriously considered is taking the current library and expanding. It could go some to the north, it could go some to the south, and I think it's workable, I think we could get the square footage. People have complained about the library collection, and what books are available. Well, how can a library collection grow if you can barely fit a book in the shelf, or take one out? It does obviously need space, but that is a good building, and there's room to expand it, and that would cost a lot less, in my understanding, than building a whole new building, square footage of a new building. I don't have it off the top of my head, I used to, but it's not cheap.
About 30 seconds.
If you use the money for the building, you don't have it for the books. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Is there another speaker?
I was sitting back there trying to be really, Dallas O'Neil, 109 Telkot Street. I was sitting back there trying to keep really quiet, not saying goodnight.
But we know you better than that, Nick.
It was so hard, because there's some good ideas here that I didn't think of, and one of them is the size of our library, you know, when they, when they build these libraries now, they're not based on books. You can save a lot of space if you go in there with an efficiency expert, and find out what that library should be versus what everybody thinks it should be, based on the old standards. And, you know, you've got a lot of space in the basement, and I don't know what it costs for the elevator in, but, you know, we're wasting a lot of space in our library, and it's just a shame that we'll have to get bigger, just that's the way everybody's doing it. And, you know, we don't have a way to talk back to the city council, except coming in here every two weeks and talking to you, putting an article in the paper, which sometimes gets a pretty good reaction. But, you know, this is our only chance to talk to you, otherwise, it's all coming down, downstream, instead of, these are the people elect you, they're trying to give you what they feel, and there's a lot of people that already made their mind. And I'm not saying the concept of merging is totally bad, because there's a lot of benefits to it, but these are people elected you, and you should listen to them, because somebody here might be running for reelection in the process, or election for different office, and there's going to be people here writing articles in the paper and saying, "Don't elect this person, they didn't listen to us, they didn't get a two-way street vote at all." And so, it really works to our favor for you not to say anything tonight, but to show it in action, and learn from it, and maybe send out some kind of a mail-in, and say, "What's important to you, what do you want to see?" Because the misperceptions are coming, a lot of people, including me, I don't like going on the computer and going through all the pages of dialogue. What I want to hear is, is something in the paper, maybe a short article saying, you know, from the mayor and the council, where we're at, and what's going on, and calming people down, that's not happening. And so, the mistrust is starting to grow, and we all know Deluxe, I don't want to bring that up too much, but everybody was reassured about Deluxe, about how everybody's going to get a voice in it, and it didn't happen, all of a sudden, it was already cut and dried, and they were going ahead with it, the city council at the time, and so, everybody worried about that, you know, they said, "Don't worry about it," you know, but they don't tell you what's going to happen, except we probably won't get a voice, and everything's been cut and dried, and by the time the public hears about it, it's going to be over. And that's a big concern out here. So, instead of talking down to everybody, I think you need to have more people coming up to you and saying, "What's important to him like this?" But maybe sending out even a mail-in, I don't know what that costs, or even a telephone type of thing, where people can call you with their concerns. I know a lot of people here have been talking to individual council members, or trying to talk to them, and it always been good enough to try to respond to a lot of those, but I think that's, you know, cutting into the communication. I think when somebody tries to get hold of a councilman, I think you should take the call, or the email, and talk to them. I don't think you should close the door on them.
About 30 seconds.
You know, go, go, thank you. Going to one person isn't the way to do this. You weren't elected as a group, you were elected as individuals, and you've got to have your own opinion, and you should be willing to bring that opinion forth, and then take it back to the general workshops. Thank you.
Thank you, Anderson. Anybody else? Okay, at this ti, oh, yes, ma'am.
I know precisely how long this speech is, please don't give me a warning. Good evening, my name is Mary Anderson, and I live at 928 Beachley Road. I think cities are a bit like households, you have your mortgage and insurance, which would be our wonderful police and fire departments, and then you have your utilities and food, which would be like our sewer and garbage, okay, maybe not the most appetizing of analogies, which are necessary obligations. Then we have what you, Jermaine, called the quality of life aspects, music, dance, and art lessons, the things that make your household better, livable, enjoyable, and that's what libraries are for cities, they enhance our quality of life. They enhance our quality of life. Libraries prove to the world that we value education and literacy. The mayor's proposal has been likened to a marriage, but in a marriage, both partners are eager to come together. In the nearly four years of their existence, the Central Skagit Library has had ample opportunity to contract with the Cedar Wally Library to provide services for their constituents, but have proved unwilling to do so. Why would we want to get in bed with them? It's clear they don't even want to live with us, let alone get married. And why would any community consider giving its over 100-year-old, successfully-run library to an entity with less than five years' experience, one which has yet to provide its own people with full library services? Surely, from a purely business sense, wouldn't such a move be considered extremely irresponsible? When my boys were young, my husband and I became Cub Scout leaders in the local PAC 67 as Cub Master and Assistant. We started off with 17 boys, and under our leadership, which combined enthusiasm with a willingness to listen and build consensus among the families and then act on it, we expanded that PAC to 90 active, happy boys. Leadership in a democracy requires strength, courage, and a willingness to listen to others, those one serves. It is not imposing one person's will upon others. I truly believe that Mayor Waggoner wishes to serve his people, the residents of Cedar Wally. It will take some listening and willingness to change positions, another quality of great leadership. For example, it would take true courage to inform the Central Skagit Library Board that you have listened to your people and your people want to keep their library. It will take responsible leadership to insist that the city-hired architect ask what the citizens of Cedar Wally, not the Central Skagit Library, want in their library, even if it means renovating and/or remodeling the current building. It will take strength and vision for a leader to present a council economic bond on behalf of our city library and work with Representative Kirk Pearson to get matching funds to upgrade and update that city library. These are the ideas we here expressed about the future of our library, not that people want to lose it, but enhance it and keep it as one of our finest city services to the public. Mayor Waggoner, we are asking you to be an honorable and conscientious leader. We are asking you and the city council—
Come over here, I'm good enough to warn you.
—with our city business to keep our city library and amplify it, to prove to the world that, yes, indeed, Cedar Wally does value literacy and education and is willing to pay for it, as we have for over 100 years. And I believe you can do it. And by the way, everyone in this room is thrilled about the new library door just about in. Thank you for listening and for doing the right thing by your people. Thank you.
Okay, at this time— At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you all. And we are up next, unfinished business, item five, 2015 Comprehensive Plan Docket amendments, second reading. These are pages 48 to 329 in your packet. Hey, give me a minute to get there. And John, I no doubt this is yours.
Yes. Okay, so what the council has in front of you today is an update to the Comprehensive Plan, the development regulations, and the zoning map as related to—
John, can I ask you to speak a little more directly into the mic, please, so everyone can hear?
I think it's a little low, we'll have them turn it up. Oh, how's this, is it a little better?
It's a little better.
All right. So what the council has in front of you today is potential updates to the Comprehensive Plan, the development regulations, and the zoning map. The Planning Commission under the 2015 Docket reviewed several items of the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations and Zoning Map as they are related to each other, and has proposed several updates. Throughout the course of the year, well, since early 2015, the Planning Commission has held numerous public hearings, open houses, workshops, and regular Planning Commission meetings. I think it was six public hearings, six regular meetings, two public workshops. That should be listed in your packet for the full details on that. What we have in front of us today is an update to the introduction of the Comprehensive Plan, an update to the land use element, including the urban growth area boundaries, which are the boundaries into which the city may grow over the next 20 years. Those, I'm going to speak a little bit about that, because those went to the county planning commission for their review, and ultimately, the county council, the county commissioners will be the ones that set those boundaries. But it's based on the work that we've done as part of this Comprehensive Plan update process. And so that's the land use element. Updated transportation element and updated economic development element, those are all part of the Comprehensive Plan. There's also proposed updates to the zoning code to introduce a new chapter 17 unnamed, 17XAX, we're referring to it, for a residential one environmentally constrained zoning designation, which would be a zoning designation that exists in one 40-acre area in the urban growth area, and wouldn't be a zone that could be used in the city until that area were to annex into the city. But we want to make it available should that area become part of the urban growth area and should it ever annex. There's also proposed updates to Chapter 1765, the Regulations for Critical Areas, and then ultimately, the updates to the zoning map, which, well, the zoning map will show proposed new urban growth area boundaries. Those are sort of tentative until the county makes their final decision. Really, the crux of the updates to the zoning map is changing zoning of one parcel of land, 128, one parcel of 21 acres from R7 to mixed commercial. And the council reviewed that back in February and gave the planning commission and staff the okay to carry on with that as part of the updates to the urban growth area. So regarding the urban growth area, after the council gave their preliminary approval, they didn't pass anything, but they said, "Yes, we believe that the planning commission did a lot of work on this." The city council reviewed what the planning commission had done as far as urban growth area boundaries and zoning changes, and gave the okay to pass that on to the county for their review process, because as I said, the county is the one that ultimately decides what areas are in the urban growth area. That urban growth area change did go to the county planning commission. They had one hearing on it, which I was allowed to speak for five minutes on a large project. And then they deliberated on it at least two times, at which point they did ask me further questions. After that long process, they did recommend that our urban growth area be allowed as— they recommended that the Board of County Commissioners approve our urban growth area as the city has requested, except for 13 acres of city-owned property to the south of current city limits. They recommended that that not be included in the urban growth area. So again, this is their recommendation going to the Board of County Commissioners, that's still a process that has yet to play out.
So, John, tonight, you're looking for three separate motions on this, is that correct?
What we're looking for is three separate motions. One, to make changes to the Comprehensive Plan. Second ordinance to make changes to the zoning regulation, or to, well, Chapter 17, which would include the residential one environmentally constrained zone, and amendments to the critical areas regulations. And then a third ordinance and motion to adopt changes to the zoning map.
Thank you. So council, that's at the bottom of page 49, are the recommended motions. Does anybody have any questions for John right now, or any other staff?
I do. John, on page 108, there's a, it talks about upzone, increasing the R15 within the city. Is that just a recommendation, or is it something that's built into our zoning?
A recommendation to, for upzoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, so after the, what you're referring to is the document that we refer to as the buildable lands analysis.
118, 108 of the real page. Somehow I lost it.
Yeah, so 108 of the packet.
It disappeared, sorry.
And I'm looking, and I'm looking right at it, and yeah, that sounds consistent with what you said, it sounds consistent with what I'm seeing here on page 108, which is our buildable lands analysis, in which—
Oh, yeah.
—after our consultant looked at exactly all of the properties that we have, which of them are developed, which of them are partially developed, and which of them are constrained by environmental or power lines or other various things that prevent development from happening, he made three, you know, he made a recommendation the city can expand it to urban growth area, or it could, you know, change some zoning within the city to accommodate, you know, upzoning.
Okay.
And the policy decision that the planning commission recommended and what the city council has been, has lent their approval to in the past, is to do an urban growth area expansion. And that's what you see in our urban growth area expansion request to the county, and what they have ultimately, the planning commission so far has recommended approval of.
Anything else, council?
Yeah, I've got some questions, and it probably should have come up meetings ago, but it didn't because I wasn't aware. But since it is included in the documents that were given along with the comp plan, I've got questions about something that has been brought to my attention on page 156 in the tip, and I've got questions about items number C29 and C30 on the trail. And I know this isn't all about the comp plan, and John, I apologize to bring this up here, but it's been brought to my attention, and I've just got questions about the Centennial Trail, item number C29. Wait a minute, I'm in the wrong spot.
It's on page 156.
Yeah, okay, that's where you— Yeah, I'm correct, that runs from Jamison down to the river? Is that correct?
So that's referred to as C29, so it should be on one of the, it would be on page 158. There's an image of that, and it runs from basically State Street South. It's a connection to the Skagit County region, it's, well, it's a Skagit County regional trail, and also continues further south into Snohomish County where the trail already exists.
So is that something that we are going to take on as a project at some point, potentially? Because it was brought to my attention that Skagit County did a land grab on that, and they did a quick clean deed on it, so I'd hate to see us get involved in something. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. Do we, Aaron, do you have info on that?
Well, yes. Randy's been good enough to spend some time with me and walk me through the history. So I guess I'd back up, there's no question that there's a whole lot of history around the county's acquisition of portions of that rail corridor. And I'm not sure that that's necessarily germane to the inclusion of a project on a planning phase element of a future, future project list. And I guess what I mean by that is if you look at this, you can see the Centennial Trail Extension Project C29, page 158, goes all the way to State Street. The county currently owns a piece of property that goes from Third South, about five acres worth, and then they, then they have a gap. Then they own a railroad bridge that's mostly just impedes the river flow, and then they have a bunch of gaps until you get to Snohomish County where you actually have a functioning trail. So the concept here is that from a distant planning standpoint, there is a county-wide vision that the trail would ultimately connect. So by putting it on our list, the city's not committing to designing it or funding it or anything else, it does make it eligible for potential funding, and it essentially says, hey, when you look way out there, this is something that we want. So that's really the question for the council, is, you know, looking forward, is it your vision that the Centennial Trail would eventually come into the city of Cedar Wally and tie into our downtown? And, you know, Randy is, I would guess, the preeminent expert on the Centennial Trail acquisition and that whole issue. There's, there's just a lot to be said about that. I guess what I would probably say about it at this point is that occurred 27 years ago? Right, Randy?
1993.
23.
The county still has the, what, plan B that he used to take the other properties.
It occurred, it occurred a couple of decades ago, and so there's certainly a process under Washington State law for landowners to clarify their title rights and to go through that process. The city imagining a trail there doesn't involve us and anybody else's property rights issue. I'll give you one other example, and that's we've got other projects on here. For example, C3 on the same page. C3 imagines a road from Cook Road all the way over to the Jones Road, and there's not one bit of that that's owned by the city. That's a future concept of how we will move people around the city to build capacity through the city. So before, before C3 might become a reality, that's a full arterial connector, there will have to be, you know, more study done. The project would have to be moved from the planning phase up to the actual tip. We would be, of course, engaged in acquisition of property rights and determining that, all the environmental review, full design, funding, and then you move forward. So I guess what I'm trying to say is there are, there are many layers to this, and this one is at the kind of 20-year vision, idea, concept phase. By including it here, it is by no means a done deal.
Okay.
Now, if it's not your vision to have the trail there, then it shouldn't be on the plan. So that's really the council decision at the policy level, is that something you want to see someday?
Okay, I understand better, thank you, I appreciate it.
I'd like to add maybe one more clarification to that as well. You'll find this described in the text on the transportation element, but there's two separate processes that we go through when we look at projects. One that you see annually is the Annual Transportation Improvement Program, we'll recall that, and we'll be seeing that again in June and July. That process looks at projects that are likely to occur within the next six years. And that's when we've drilled down these long-range plans into something we're actually trying to fund and build on a short-term basis. That, that's the time that we are doing the things that Aaron is talking about, we're looking at right-of-way, we're looking at environmental funding in particular, it becomes critical during that stage. There's a complete public process that we go through for that. We currently approach that process as a council public hearing on the tip, and then you vote that, and then we implement that plan, or we start looking for funds and those kind of things. The transportation plan itself, the transportation element of the comp plan, is the long-range planning part of that. That's where we kind of identify the projects, as Aaron said, about 20 years and more. In fact, we have just added on these two projects, C29 and C30, which one's the Centennial Trail and the other one is the Cascade Trail. But they've been in our Comprehensive Plan for longer than that in terms of concepts. You'll find in the— You'll find in the 2005 comprehensive plan, those same two concept trails are listed. We've also been coordinating with both the Department of Transportation and the Council of Governments, Skagit Council of Governments, to try to plan for completion of those trails over a longer-term period. And so they had just risen up enough in, in that process that I put them on the 20-year plan as identified projects rather than the bigger picture of just, we want to do this someday. It makes it a little more, in a situation where we can look at them a little more intensely than you would if we just left it out in never, never land. And again, as Aaron said, you know, drilling down to the concept of where we're going to put those things is still, that's, that's down the road. I don't know that we would build those on the former railroad right-of-way. That's where they're shown on the map. That may be the way, but it may not. They may run parallel to Highway 9. In fact, as we go north out of, out of Seadrily, it is coincident with Highway 9. To the south, the concept the county's had and that they've been pursuing is to use the abandoned railroad right-of-way. That's a concept that's worked in many places around the country. But it's not the only way of doing that. You can put it on the shoulder of a road. So anyway, it's a concept thing at this point. It's, it's not a project that we're going to go out and build next year. In fact, you'll see that they're on there for 2036, both of those. So that's right at the end of the plan.
Does any other councilman have questions?
Thanks, I appreciate you letting me go out of the box a little bit on that.
So page 49, bottom of the page are the three suggested motions. Ordinance number 1848-16 is next. Counsel's pleasure.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 1848-TAC16 to adopt amendments to the land used element, transportation element, economic development element, and comprehensive land use map, all included in the Seadrily Comprehensive Plan. Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilman Judith Dunley and seconded by Councilman Jermaine Carnegie to approve ordinance 1848-TAC16 to adopt amendments to the land use element, transportation element, economic development element, and comprehensive land use, all included in the Seadrily Comprehensive Plan. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It passes unanimously? Sorry, didn't say that. Lost in thought there for a moment. Two more recommendations are on the docket. This would be 1848, I'm sorry, 1849-16.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1849-16 to create a new Chapter 17 dot XX SWMC hyphen residential one, environmentally constrained zone, to adopt the amendments to Chapter 17 dash, or dot 65, Seadrily Municipal Code Regulations for Critical Areas.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilman Sandstrom, seconded by Councilman Lemley to adopt ordinance 1849 hyphen 16 to create a new Chapter 17 point XX Seadrily Municipal Code Residential Run, Environmentally Constrained Zone, and adopt amendments to Chapter 17 point 65, Seadrily Municipal Code Regulations for Critical Areas. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Last one on the comprehensive plan.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 1850-16 to adopt amendments to the Seadrily zoning map. Seconded.
Okay, motion was made by Councilman Carnegie and seconded by Councilman Kinzer to adopt ordinance 1850-16, adopting amendments to the Seadrily zoning map. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, may I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
So these periodic updates on the comp plan are, what, every six years? John?
Well, they move the target, I think it's eight years now.
All right, so these are legislatively mandated, executed by Commerce to us as the recipient of the good news of all the work. I just want to point out for, for those of you who've had to read through all of it, you know, we may make comments and suggest about how it's a great way to put ourselves to sleep at night, but really this was a Herculean task that in most communities is performed either by consultants, temporary staff, or dedicated teams. And in our case, it was John with internal staff support, a little bit of consultant support, but I would say we probably have the most bare-bones expense profile on a comp plan update of this magnitude of anybody that I'm aware of. And so I just want to compliment publicly John Coleman for sticking with this thing and performing as well as he has and producing an excellent product on a Seadrily budget.
Nice job, John.
So I wanted you to know that too.
Well, that was going to be my part, but I did shake John's hand and if you want to see a guy competently and calmly answer a bunch of questions in a fairly hostile environment, go back and watch the video, what John went through down there. And I was very proud of you. I was a little insulted about how the city was treated at that hearing, but I think you did a good job in keeping your cool. You did a better job than I would have done. And at the end of the day, Seadrily won out, so I would enjoin you to all go watch that video. Thanks, John.
Thank you. That was the May 17th Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, yes. For those of you who need reference.
I was going to ask.
Very ugly and I would, a little more than, a little insulting to the city, in my opinion. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Sergeant Harris.
Good evening. A couple of things going on we're a little excited about. Tomorrow morning, we had two officers from the department testing for the countywide HRT team, which is essentially the countywide SWAT team. So two of our, we currently have one on that team, which is Sergeant Dan McLeary. And then tomorrow, we've got Officer Chris Rogers and Brian Hall are testing to join that team as well. So they're going to have 10 hours of testing. It's going to go through, you name it, they're going to do it. It's a firearms, written test, inspection, physical agility, and then a practical. So it's going to be a pretty intensive test for them and we're pretty confident that they're both going to come out pretty strong, so we're excited. The benefit to us is they're going to bring that knowledge back when they go to SWAT basic school to teach the rest of us some, some better tactics for officer safety and entries and things like that. So that'll be pretty exciting. We'll have two of our folks on that team, which is a countywide team, so we're, we're happy for that. Then if you, if you're not already aware, we've got the internet exchange signs posted out front for the online type purchases. And that's been an incredible positive feedback from the community, from other departments throughout the state, not just the county, but throughout the state. We're venting phone calls from other agencies all over the place as to what are we doing? How do we do it? How can they implement that? So it's pretty encouraging to have us as one of the leaders doing it and we're just kind of following suit, so.
Do you have a count on the Facebook hits on that post?
That one, earlier today, I looked it up, there was over 1,800 shares on that post itself on our Facebook and there was over 300 comments. And I scanned through those 300 and all of them were positive.
And can you explain it for our public so they understand what you're doing there, please?
So what that is, is you've heard of the online purchases they'll do for your Craigslist or letitgo.com type of things. So we've got two parking spots parked out front of the police department that we have a camera on that records 24/7. So those are dedicated parking spots that someone can come, do their internet exchange and feel in a safe environment to where there, nothing bad can happen. Recently, just this week in the news, there's multiple shots fired at the Stanley Parking Ride where two different people got shot doing an internet exchange. And the timing is just kind of, for us, it worked out pretty good, but, you know, we don't want that happening in Seadrily, obviously. So we came up with this idea and so far it's been very positive feedback, so.
Thank you, my daughter's used it.
Fantastic. That's a good thing.
Did you say, did you say who else was doing it already?
The Bellingham Police Department, honestly, that's where we got the idea from, is, I know they're doing it, I'm not sure of other agencies. We've talked to, yesterday I think it was Pasco PD, they called us, and then Kirkland PD called us. And we've, we've talked to those folks about it as well.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Yeah, that's funny.
Well, as you've heard, the fire department's been quite busy, especially helping our neighbors with fires and we, the fire department itself, in town, we've been pretty busy. We've had several aid calls today and we did end up transporting one patient in our G.O.S. car today. We had two fires today. We had a couple of burns, illegal burns going on and it got out of control and burned about two and a half acres of the farmer's field. And then we had a, just had a vehicle fire. Great response from volunteers and numbers and great, excellent professionalism out there. They did an excellent job, both cases, so just have to give praise to them.
Thanks. And I want to thank the department for taking the ladder truck out to the groundbreaking ceremony for the new county veterans park east of town. I got a lot of comments, the American flag hung from it. It was a very neat ceremony and people really noticed the truck and the flag. And a bald eagle flew right over when we were doing colors, so it was a really neat thing. Thanks for thinking, John. John?
Well, thank you for finishing up our 2015 comprehensive plan. That's a tremendous load off. So now we can get to the business of doing more project-related items in the planning and building department. Again, things are picking up in the department and you'll be seeing other notices about projects coming up. Nothing really to speak about right now, but-
Then don't.
I was going to say, so with that, I'm done.
Excellent. Mark?
Well, on that planning note, there's some projects we've been working on for literally years. Our start of now, Jamison started on the 16th, contract mobilized that week and they've actually started putting storm grain and grating and grinding asphalt and moving full speed ahead on that project. Hope to finish it the first week of November. Ferry Street, they started on the overlay project there. We're putting a piece of sidewalk in along the old APP site. They're working on that and getting the other prep work done and the plan is to be done by that, for the, with that project before Lager Rodeo. David Lee is in the process of getting his final plans together for the SR-20 Cascade Trail project and we're looking to add, go to add in June for that and complete that in October of this year. So things are quite busy at Public Works there in addition to all the other things we normally do, that Nathan's got going on around and Debbie and Leo. So I've also reviewed the 30% plans for the Fruitdale Road project and we're looking to get the 70% plans in, in the latter part of June and have that ready to approach tip for a funding package in August when they come up, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron?
So the jail project continues to be on track for summer 2017 opening and as per Councilman Owen's request, the project manager has made arrangements for a jail tour. And at this point, I've got Councilman Owen, Councilmember Kinzer, Councilmember Carnegie.
Yes, I responded.
I thought you said yes too.
Yes.
And Councilmember Dunley.
Say it again?
June 2nd afternoon.
Can I bring Ogden?
No.
Okay, no.
I know it'd enjoy it, but it will be a working site, so-
He has a hard hat.
They want, they want covered, covered shoes and I suspect that would cause their risk management people to be stressed. We will have a post-opening tour as well that would be more appropriate for, you know, everybody, so. Sounds like one, two, three, four, mayor's coming, so I'll get back to project manager with our number. And then are you going to give the EMS update?
Yes.
That's it for me?
Patsy?
The finance department has completed and filed all of the 2015 annual reports that we're responsible for. The council finance committee received by email, as well as the mayor, copies of documents that were filed. In 2015, the state auditor's office, following the federal guidelines, raised the dollar amount that's necessary for a federal single audit. So as a result, we will not have one, which does save about $10,000. What it also does is put out the timeliness of the audit, because they have to have all those federal audits statewide completed by September 30th. So I don't expect the auditors to come until October through December, somewhere in that timeframe. For those newer council members, when the audit is scheduled, you will receive directly from the auditors, an invitation to come to an entrance conference to talk about what they're going to audit and give any input you might have on what you would want seen, you know, conducted in the audit. Because this year will be financial as well as compliance audits. And then you will also be invited to the exit conference to hear firsthand, you know, what the, what they found or didn't find, what the results of the audit are. So that's all I have this evening.
Okay, Judith?
Well, as Aaron mentioned, we have the EMS delivery committee that we're on and the last one, we heard from several of the people particularly involved, like the Anacore Fire Department, the, the chief of the Anacore Fire Department, Central Valley Ambulance, Arrow Skagit, operations manager for CBAA, and the EMS division director for Anacore Fire Department. And so it's like we're getting closer and closer to where we're going to have to actually put something in writing as far as what our shared vision is on this. Also, I do have one other thing. I have a constituent who's been emailing me about fires that are blowing in on him. He lives on Klinger Street and he's thinking that the fires are in the city limit. I'm not sure they are, but somebody's doing yard, yard waste burning.
Okay, so I would advise them to call 911, worst thing.
Well, it's, it's, it's just the smoke is coming in on him.
If it's becoming, if, if it's irritating to them, then yes, we can address that. So we can go out and investigate, is the fire a legal burn or not a legal burn? And then if it becomes too much of an irritant still, even if it's a legal burn, that we can still justify having them maybe change different times about when he's going to burn to try to accommodate the neighbor. Or we can just ban him from burning anyways, because once it becomes a nuisance, it's still, it's illegal then too.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, I will email him that information. Thank you.
Speaking of that kind of thing, I thought, she just kind of reminded me about, I've been making quite a few phone calls lately about graffiti again. It's the same, it's usually the same two areas I see over and over again. One was Sap, I'm sorry, yeah, Sap and Reed Street, that one fence there, just, you know, and they always clean it up, but it seems like it's there again. It's like, I keep thinking, I thought I reported that and, and they took care of it and that it happens again, the same fence. And it's that fence and then there was another one in Ward 5, I believe, on Waldron and Ball Street. There's that old fence there too. And I think it's the same markings.
It, it is. So we believe we know who are doing it. Two of them are currently in custody, they're- Uh, two of them are currently in custody, they're, they range from twelve to fourteen years old. Um, what we know and what we can prove are two different things, so it makes the charging a lot more difficult. Uh, we spoke to the homeowner at North Reed and SAP, uh, we actually sent our, um, work crew up to start it, to clean that fence up, along with the other stuff that they did. The homeowner came out, requested us to stop, that they wanted to repaint the fence and then, uh, put up bushes or trees or something along the line. Uh, that was last week, so we're gonna be actually going out tomorrow to talk with homeowner again, because we gotta get it cleaned up sooner than later. Um, our work crew is going to offer to go and, and paint the fence with just a primer to get that covered up, and then let the homeowner, hopefully at that point, go after it. The one on, uh, Waldron and Ball behind the ride aid, um, we don't know if that person's on vacation, not home, we're having, we've tried all different hours a day to try to contact that owner, um, before we go and tackle their fence for them. Um, it's always best to get their approval, permission, um, so, we're, we're struggling to get in touch with those folks to get that cleaned up, but those two are clearly on our list and we're addressing those.
Thank you. I appreciate the sooner rather than later thing, I, the sooner the better kinda thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Another thing I wanted to remind folks about, the, um, upcoming, I guess before our next meeting, uh, June third through the fifth, we're doing, of course, a blast from the past, and the, the theme is nineteen sixty-six, and the contests are on Saturday, so bring your hula hoops. It's, uh, twelve thirty to three thirty, I guess is when they do the contests, so, car show on Sunday, right?
Motorcycle show on Saturday.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
Yep.
Brenda?
Yeah, I, um, I wanna talk about the intersection of Wally and State Street, and how difficult it is if you're headed north to make a left-hand turn off of Wally Street. Um, I think I brought it up before, but unfortunately, this week, I had the opportunity to be home when school gets out and watched how many cars actually back up on that road, because it is so hard to get out, because the parking spaces for the laundromat really, really impede the vision of westbound traffic, so if you wanna see to make a left-hand turn, it's almost impossible, especially if there's a larger vehicle sitting there. Um, so I'm wondering if it's possible, can we take out one of those parking spaces? I know that parking is so, um, valuable there, especially for those businesses, but it seems like it's really an accident waiting to happen, especially when kids get out of school.
It's not raining, it was, it was a lot, it's a surprise. I don't think, um, especially when it's out.
Yeah.
You know, uh, you just kind of, uh, like, I didn't see the page, you know, made that a left turn, they were around the block. I've taken, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, yeah, it's always...
But it's hard to get out all the time, any time of day. Okay, if someone can address that.
I'll take a look into that.
Right.
We, we've, we've explored changing the, uh, channelization at that intersection a couple of times, and, uh, we've got a lot of pavement there, and it's, it's, it's tricky how to do that, and, so, uh, the last, last time we looked at it, we decided probably better to leave it as it was, but we can look at things like vision and all of that, I'll look into that.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Chuck?
Yeah, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Coleman, uh, he works awfully hard on those things, and, uh, I don't, I don't know how he has the patience to, to keep it up, but, uh, we spend a lot of time, uh, Judith and I, on, on the planning commission, and, uh, I have to admit, it gets awful boring after a while, it just keeps coming up and up, and, and he works hard to please everybody that objects to the zoning, and I have to give him, I take my hat off to him, he, he does an excellent job, and, I hate to say that, but, you do, and, uh, I'm sure the city appreciates it, and, and the people you work hard to please, they appreciate it, too. And I have a whole list of, of stop sign, brush, whatever, people can't get out into their, the street without, you know, taking a chance of getting hit, so, I, I guess I'd give this to the street department to have them take a look at it, right?
Yeah, there's a, there's a council form that you can fill out there that you can get from, uh, from Christine, and if you wanna attach that list to that...
Yeah, I'll give it to Christine, if she can take care of it. Okay, thank you.
Pull that Warner and Eighth Street to that list.
Yeah.
And also to, uh, Mark for what he's doing on all these grant projects and things. Um, but I had a, a call from a gentleman who's an avid biker in town about trying to get a bike lane down Indian streets, Ferry Street, State Street, whether that's a possibility, uh, put share the road signs up.
Yeah.
Avid bikers or things with that, didn't know how. And also, he lived on the east side of Township on Warner, and has children that walk to Central and Mary Purcell, and was concerned why there was no crosswalks at that intersection. There is at State Street and Calcott, but not on Warner. I'm wondering about the possibility of crosswalks in that intersection, too.
I'd just say on the bike lane things, uh, they can be challenges on just normal city streets, uh, Ferry is an arterial, of course, but, um, it, uh, it does play havoc with parking, and, uh...
That's what I told him.
Yeah.
It's there, 'cause they're doing this, side street parking, but, but what is the options for, it's not really a school district that far away from the schools, is it, three, three blocks out?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at that, it's actually been mentioned before, and it might've been yourself that did that, uh, Township and Warner, is the one that you're talking about.
Anything else, Rick?
Um, just, I, I guess, comment on tonight, I, one of the words I heard a lot from folks out there before they left was confusion, um, and I think a lot of that is not getting information out, unable to have dialogue, so I'm interested in having an informational open house or something like that, that could lay out sort of, you know, the ideas that are out there, what has happened so far, and, and to have an open dialogue, to talk to people, I mean, because people are coming, they're saying they're closing the, you know, the, the library, all sorts of things are being said, not factual, more fear, and I think we need to have a, a dialogue, you know, 'cause, you know, half the people left tonight, I can't go out in there and ask them questions, they're gone, so, I'm interested in having something like that, soon.
Deborah, I, I'm with you on that.
Just, just kind of, you know, an up-to-date snapshot of what's happening, what's happened, what, you know, what are the facts on both sides, whatever it is, that's...
Timeline, like a timeline, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, just, uh, you know, an open house or an informational session, where dialogue can, can, you know, go both ways.
Sounds like a public hearing kinda thing?
I don't know, we have them on, you know, silly roundabouts, why can't we have them on, on library?
How soon do you want to have this meeting?
Oh, I don't know, I mean, last month, I don't know.
And are you thinking of an evening meeting?
Uh, well, yeah, maybe it could be like a couple hours before a meeting, I mean, maybe not the last Wednesday, so it doesn't interfere with, you know, the, or maybe that would be a good meeting to have, an informational coincide with the library board meeting, I don't know, something...
But we've always said that would happen anyway.
I know, but...
But we're not, we're not at a point where we have an agreement to present.
I know, I know, it's still abstract, I get the abstractness of it, and it's hard to, to pin down facts out of abstraction, but, but just something to, you know, because there's a lot of misinformation.
Why don't we do it before we have the, any kind of agreement, so that we know that we're going in the right direction on our agreement?
And enough time to be able to advertise it to everyone, so that no one can say that they didn't know about it, so that we can make sure we get the word out.
Yeah, well, we can certainly get something scheduled, you, it sounds like you like a, like a five to six thirty or seven slot before a council meeting, which might be a handy time. Now, um, so, just process wise, since, since you raised the, the question, um, and we talked about this a little bit earlier at the library board meeting, uh, where we are today, of course, is we've had one formal negotiation session, and our meeting again, um, next week, Tuesday, so that'll be our second session, and so, at least, as I've imagined, the public participation, uh, component, uh, once there's a concept, I always thought we would have a public process to discuss the concept, and then go back and refine it, ultimately develop an agreement. That would then be part of a public process, where, where folks could literally go through and say, you know, on page three, line five, I don't like that, and here's why. Um, but before we can even get to the concept, you know, our architectural firm that the city hired a couple meetings ago, uh, will need to perform the needs assessment, that's gonna happen in the community, and we've contracted with them for two community meetings as well as a couple of stakeholder meetings. So, um, I, I'm all for answering the questions, I, it's certainly as frustrating for me as it is for the staff, not, as for the public, to not be able to jump in and say, well, of course, we're not gonna give it away, that, that's crazy, that's, that's not part of any plan, and so, it is, you know, I, I guess I wanna acknowledge similar shared frustration that what we're doing now is, doesn't feel good at the end of the day, uh, 'cause there's clear questions that we could give clear answers to, and we need to find a way to do that, so if that's the work session that you're thinking of, where we could at least get what we know now out there, it's not gonna be as satisfying, I think, as some think, because there's certainly a sense in the community that there is a conclusion that has already been reached, and that there are people against the conclusion, and, uh, the frustration for me is, it's a process that is, we, we don't yet have a conclusion, we, we don't know that we will be able to conclude the process, so, to be against a conclusion that is not yet known is so frustrating for those who are actually engaged in the process, knowing that there's, there's a role, a meaningful role for the public before any decision ever gets made yet to happen. Um, so this is kind of a, a meeting, maybe, um, not unlike the conversation from the city council's February meeting, where it's open, and you have some back and forth, but I guess I just wanted to preface it by saying, at that point, we will have had two meetings, so we'll know a little bit more, um, but really, what we could hear is what the community's concerns are about a concept of partnership, can, you know, concerns about conclusions that are not yet known are, are just so very difficult to utilize in, in our work, as we try to do something that's good for the community. And that's what's so hard about this, is I know everyone's intentions are so positive and yet it feels so negative, but I'll be glad to work on, on getting it scheduled, uh, maybe we could do something as early as, uh, either the, the first or the eighth even, well, probably not the first, that's already next week, but the eighth might give some time, um, we'll just have to look at the calendars, and then, uh, the mayor can call a special meeting to do that.
Which I think is a really long way of saying, that was the plan all along, but we're not there.
Well, I know, I, I, but I, I just, it just seems like, we, we're doing, you know, we're not doing a good job, whatever, you know, that's, even convincing people, it's in an abstraction still, and that's what I, I think, that's concerning, and I know, that's, I guess, what I'm trying to address, and, and have an open dialogue, instead of, you know, trying to chase somebody down at the end of a meeting, or, or having some, you know, people come talk to me after, you know, on the street, you know, that's what I'm interested in, is, is more direct conversation, more often.
Anything else, Matt?
No.
Okay, down to me. So, um, Memorial Day weekend, I invite you to join me out at Union Cemetery, every year I put flags out on the graves, um, it feels good and it's also educational, you'll be surprised what you learn.
Yeah.
Um, you probably don't wanna come hear my speech at ten thirty, but I'll be speaking as well.
What day, what time?
Uh, Monday, um, they usually start around eight thirty putting the flags out, and, uh, then the ceremony's at ten thirty, so, hope to see as many of you there as possible, and hopefully we'll have good weather.
And when do they take them down?
That's the better day.
Oh, they take them down, um...
The next day?
The next day, in the, I think in the evening. Um, we got four kids going to state in track this year, so, uh, I'm happy, one of them is my son, but we took first and second in the Pro Volton District, that's pretty amazing, especially, uh, our second place guy's first year ever coming out for track. We got Billy Hornbeck, who's going down in, uh, hundred and ten meter hurdles and the three hundred meter hurdles, and he's, uh, set school records in both this year, so, uh, if you have a chance to go down to Mount to Home and cheer the kids on, I know it's only a few of, of the boys, but, uh, I would encourage you to go.
Girls?
Um, no, I don't think any girls made it this year. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And we're done.